I'll call the council to order, let the roll reflect that all council members are present and a quorum has been established. Council, the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on April 6, 2015, and are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of that meeting? Seeing none, they stand approved. Council items to be considered, is there any council items to be considered this evening? Seeing none, we have a presentation tonight in regards to the first quarter, Green Team, and recycling check from Tenon Sanitation. I think Stacy is here to address us, and Stacy, welcome. We're very glad to have you here at the meeting.
So, tonight we have Lisa, she's from the All Night Grad Party. If you want to come up, Lisa, I'll go ahead and issue your proceed check. So, they, for the first quarter, collected 26.43 tons. Their total proceeds are $396.53.
Great. Congratulations. Would you like to say a few words? Please do.
Sure. So, the All Night Grad Party, I think that this is their 39th year, this is my third year chairing it, my sixth year working on it, so this has been the first time, I think, that we've ever done this fundraiser, and it's just been fantastic. Really, really a great fundraiser. So, I think that this money will probably go towards games. Of course, we're kind of like in the home stretch now, and so, you know, we're in the process of getting all of our vendors and all of our decorations already and stuff, so this will be really helpful. So, thank you.
Great, and thank you, and thank you for your efforts. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And then, we've also issued Melanie the revenue share check for first quarter of $483.64.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Stacy.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate you being here this evening.
Thank you.
Council, we'll go to consent agenda. Consent agenda is now before us, what is your wish? Councilmember Longi makes a motion to approve, second by councilmember Nelson. That motion is now before the body. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we'll go to awarding of contracts and public hearing. We have a public hearing tonight in regards to business subsidy at Art Space Block 1. John, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council members. I'll put up a map of what we're looking at tonight, which is scheduled to be a public hearing to consider a business subsidy for the transfer of one acre of property located right here, on the northeast corner of Tyler and Second Street. Essentially, it's a parking lot right now owned by Hedra, located just east of graphic.
You've got to turn it on.
Oh, that would be helpful, too. We'll try that again. Here's the picture again, here's the, here's what we're looking at.
For the people who benefit at home, John, I'll try and explain that again.
Yeah, for the people at home, again, this is Tyler Street, Second Street, one acre of property here, this is the property that we are considering to transfer to Art Space for a dollar. And the purpose of tonight's meeting on the schedule was to hold a public hearing to consider a business subsidy. Upon further research as to the need and requirements for a business subsidy, we did speak with our Hedra attorney, realized that because this is primarily a residential project, it does not require a business subsidy agreement, so we are not moving forward with that tonight. However, we did schedule this as a public hearing, so we can take any comment when we open up that portion of it, Mr. Mayor. What I am looking for, for an action item today, if you would consider it, is to get direction and a motion from the council as to the price of the property at $1 per acre. As you are aware, we've been working diligently through this over the last couple of months, a couple of meetings through the Finance Committee, and also through Hedra. And within your packet, I provided some information on some of the background that we have done. From the council's standpoint, we did take action about a month ago to enter into an option to purchase the property. Essentially, in order for Art Space to be eligible for some funding at Dakota County, they needed to have control of the site, and so we did grant authorization to Hedra to enter into the option agreement, which we have done. The one thing that the option agreement did not state was the terms of any transfer or the price of the property itself. In the meantime, we have met with the Finance Committee, and we have met with Hedra on the discussion of $1 for the site. There is a letter within your packet that outlines some of the reasoning that Art Space has given for why we should consider the dollar. Hedra and the Finance Committee also discussed that issue as well. I think some of the takeaways from the meetings we had with both of those organizations is we've had the property now for about 20 years, we have not been into a development agreement for about 10 years, and we would like to see something occur on that site. Looking at the pro forma that Art Space has set up, they would be bringing in about a 12 or 13 million dollar project, 37 housing units, some commercial space for artists, live-work units. It would be a boost for this area and bring needed residential development within the downtown. In addition to that, we would still leave the northern part of this block, which is about 1.75 acres, open for development, and so that might be a catalyst to have other development occur on the block. So, both of those organizations, both Hedra and the Finance Committee of Council, have both recommended sale of this property for $1. And so, I can stand for any questions that you may have right now. Again, we did schedule a public hearing, if you care to open that up, and I could stand for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation, John, appreciate that. I'm going to open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to the issue in regards to the Art Space Block 1 project? Okay, let's not have everybody rush up here. I'm going to close that public hearing. Council, there is, as discussed by John, a request that we would support action tonight, a motion in regards to the sale price of this particular piece of property, and so let's have that discussion. Councilmember Longi.
Thank you, Your Honor, and I'm happy to make a motion to get things started, if they can get a second.
Thank you.
Make a motion for staff recommendation.
Okay, a motion for staff recommendation, second by councilmember Balsanik, councilmember Longi.
Thank you, Your Honor. John, I'm looking at the timeline that's on, I don't know which page it is, but it's the one with the yellow bars there, and it is, it is, it looks, you know, fine to me, it's what everybody has said that this would take, and it takes a little while to get everything up and running. Just asking you to update your risk analysis, if you will, whether you've done it formally or informally, do you see anything on the horizon lately that's different from what you may have seen a month ago or two months ago, in terms of any delays in this timeline? If we move forward tonight with this vote, do we have as much assurances as anybody can have regarding the future that this will stay on track?
Sure, councilmember, I can provide an update on that.
Thanks.
I did speak to Dakota CDA staff today, they are individuals that are be processing the low-income housing tax credits and the funding for pre-development financing for the subject site, and everything is going on track there. They are set to make those applications in May and June. So, what I should have set upon earlier in the presentation is the risk that we do have to the city and to Hedra for this project, which is pretty limited at this standpoint. When we first started a discussion of an art space project, there was about $750,000 worth of pre-development financing that somebody else would need to pay for, not Art Space, and that somebody else would likely fall upon the city or Hedra to find those funding sources. Through the course of working with Dakota CDA and the funding that they have available, all the pre-development funding would come from them, there would not be necessary to have a pre-development agreement, so the risk of financing pre-development is off the table. We are not on the table for any of that. For the project itself, the project would be funded entirely by Art Space through low-income housing tax credits and other sources, so the city would not be asked to contribute towards the financing of the project. What we are asked to contribute would be the land, we would put together an agreement that would precondition certain actions take place, including approvals of the property and securing a financing before that property was officially transferred over. So, our risk moving forward is quite limited.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm taking that to mean, then, that if we agree in principle of this land for a dollar deal, and if they are not able to maintain their end of the bargain, the land reverts back to the city.
Correct.
Under most conditions, most reasonable conditions.
Yeah, and I would clarify by saying, wouldn't even revert, it wouldn't even transfer.
Fair enough.
We would keep ownership of the property until such time as those conditions were met.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, councilmember. Further discussion to the motion. Councilmember Schultz.
John, if Art Space doesn't, doesn't move forward as quickly as we want, according to the timeline, the option agreement on the property expires at the end of the year, and that's still in place, correct?
That is correct.
So, that's kind of our fallback option.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion, council. Councilmember Vaughn.
With the, with the county helping the project, I mean, there, my question would be is, have we looked at the option of selling the property to Dakota County for a dollar? Because that seems like the connection there that has to happen to, because they're kind of covering that, that gap.
Mm-hmm.
And then, if it does disband, doesn't work, then it comes back, then we deal with the county versus a developer. That was my only question, and throughout all these conversations, has that been discussed at all?
Sure. You know, councilmember, we haven't discussed that, discussed transferring the property over to the county. In my looking at it, we would only transfer the property over if the financing was secured and if project approvals were secured, and probably a couple other things as well. And so, we would, we're in the best position right now of being in full control of the property and dictating terms as to when that would be transferred. So, having another party involved, like the CDA, may complicate things, and I'm not sure what the benefit would be at that point.
Further discussion, council. We do have a motion before us, there's no further discussion to that motion. All those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we have under Public Works, a resolution before the council tonight in regards to Riverfront Renaissance Phase 3 Final Design. Nick, welcome to the meeting.
Thanks, Your Honor. Councilmembers, good evening. Tonight, the council has, for consideration, a resolution to authorize the start to our final design process and cost estimation tasks for Phase 3 of the Riverfront Renaissance. So, what we're aiming to do by starting now is to get that in step with our budgeting process for 2016, so we've got a much better grip on what we think the costs are going to be and can insert that then in our 2016 budget. So, want to get started on that a little sooner than we otherwise might for an infrastructure project. Phase 3 includes the work along the streets in downtown, Sibley, Ramsey, Tyler, Second Street, the concrete pavement repairs that would be happening there, streetscaping, some amenities, other amenities within the boulevards, additional wayfinding signage, the Oliver's Grove makeover, intersection bump outs, lighting retrofit to our system down there, and a variety of other things. So, that just gives you a little bit of a picture on what we'll be pushing ahead with in terms of fabricating the final designs for that project. Bolton &amp; Menck is, would be recommended to stay on board as our consultant, they developed the master plan, and we would expand on that with this work, and their cost proposal for this phase of the work was about $245,000, very similar to what we have in place, working with them for Phase 2. It's a similar-sized project, not quite as, as large in scope, but very similar to Phase 2. So, turn it back to you, Mayor Hicks.
Thank you, Nick, for introducing that item. Council, this, this issue is before us, what's your wish? Councilmember Schultz.
Your Honor, I will, I'll make a motion, but I also have a question.
Okay, councilmember Schultz makes a motion to adopt, second by councilmember Balsanik. Councilmember Schultz.
Nick, the last two bullets under Financial Impact, enhanced screening of Excel Energy Substation and undergrounding of electrical and telecom facilities, can you give us an update on where you might be in the discussions on that with Excel?
Yeah, we, Melanie and I had a meeting with Excel's community relations person and a couple of their engineering staff about a month and a half ago, I might be a little off on that, and in that meeting, we discussed a couple of different preliminary options for the undergrounding aspect or cleaning up the variety of electrical facilities that we have in the alley between the bridge and Sibley Street. They presented some ballpark cost for that. We haven't moved ahead in exploring any particular one of those anymore, with any more intensity than that right now, but that would be kicked into high gear as part of this process. Similar case for the substation screening, that's, again, some, some figures on paper, but not a lot of detail yet, and very ballpark level right now, but we would hit both of those very hard in getting down to making some recommendations for decisions for the council to consider as part of the Phase 3 planning.
Follow-up, Your Honor.
Sure.
So, I mean, if we're going to start the budget process in late May, early June, so if we can start at least getting some ballpark figures, if the city's got any, if there's any impact to us on anything, we might have to, we might have to contribute to those two things, it would be good to know sooner rather than later.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Longi.
Thanks, Your Honor. Just want to make sure that each of the items, my understanding of what we're approving tonight is just for you to get that final design work done and to cost out this, and that there will be an approval at a later date regarding actual final approval, because we have still the budget to work on, and that'll be part of the budget. So, will each of the items that are bulleted here at the bottom of your first page of your memo, anyway, concrete pavement, pavement joint rehabilitation, make or makeover of Oliver Grove Park, retrofitting of street lighting fixtures, those are each going to have individual cost items that we can look at, assess, and then determine if we want them as part of the package as a council, correct?
We can line item them out as, in that format, yes.
That'd be helpful.
It's very easy to do.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. Is there a further discussion to the motion? Councilmember Balsanik.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I received a phone call last week from a constituent who was concerned about handicapped access to the various things that are being constructed in the Riverfront Renaissance, and I assured her that, and I want to assure the public, that we have taken note of that, and it's going to be very user-friendly for handicapped individuals. The, the one concern that she did have that relates here to, to Phase 3 is that she felt we needed more handicapped parking on Second Street, and so I said I would put in a bid on that to at least be recognized, and I said I would continue to follow up on that. She said specifically that she always liked to shop at Myers, but because there was no handicap parking on Second Street, and Second Street is fairly full with its parking, she has had to go elsewhere to do her shopping. And I'm sure if, if she feels this way, usually there's another 10, 15, 20 people that are feeling the same way, they just haven't gotten around to a phone call or an email. So, I would love to have you add another bullet, that handicapped parking will be something that is, is put in the forefront along with Phase 3. Thank you.
We have a motion before us, is there further discussion to the motion? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Thank you, Nick. Next, we go back to John, under Community Development, authorized signature for development agreement in South Pines 8th Edition.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll put the screen on this time.
Okay.
Let's see, here we go. Not a problem. What we have before us tonight, Mayor and City Council, is approval of a development agreement. Typically, a development agreement would be something we would place on the consent agenda. Essentially, what we're doing is memorializing the conditions of the approved final plat. But in this situation, I did want to call to your attention some park dedication that is a little bit unusual with this development, and some lengthy discussions and research that we've gone through to try to determine park dedication in this area. What I have on the screen here is South Pines 8th Edition, this is the development agreement that is before us. The 8th Edition over here is this kind of oranges-beige color, it is 19 lots altogether. Now, the developer in considering park dedication had countered that park dedication had already been paid for the 8th Edition, and so we did a little bit of research on that based upon what's been happening in this area over the last 10 or so years. In South Pines 4th Edition, there was a preliminary plat and a final plat. The preliminary plat was essentially everything that was north of this black line here, and that was about 213 lots altogether. But the final plat was only about 56 lots, that was the area in yellow. As part of that, park dedication was paid as well as a park dedicated at that time. The reason why I'm going through this is, when you take a look at the total amount that was paid for park dedication, it didn't jive with the park dedication rates at the time. What it did appear to, to match it very well to was the remaining development of the preliminary plat, which is everything north of this black line. Now, granted, I have not been able to go through and research to find out specifically that the intent of the payment of park dedication for South Pines 4th Edition in 2003 was for the entire development, but when you take a look at the park dedication rates, it matches up within a few dollars to that. So, I am comfortable that that is, was the intent. And so, I laid out this map here to kind of show what has been done and what would be done in the future under this scenario. Essentially, everything here that's been colored has been platted already, and park dedication has been satisfied. This area here that's north of the black line that is uncolored would be lots that could be developed in the future, and there's about 100 there altogether. So, as we move forward with, with park dedication within this area of the development, the developer would not be charged any future park dedication, the assumption would be made that park dedication was previously satisfied. When you look south of this line towards this area, this area was not. So, future developments that would occur here would be eligible for park dedication. And so, I wanted to bring this explanation forward to the council tonight to make sure that this was something that the council was consistent in staff's opinion to follow into the future with park dedication in the area. As far as the development agreement itself, the conditions on there are similar to what we had within the plat, the final plat approval, nothing more substantial than that on the development. But I could stand for any questions related to the agreement or to the park dedication. The action before you again tonight is to authorize signature of the development agreement, and as part of that signature, we would not have any park dedication owed for the 8th Edition, based on the assumption it's already been paid. So, I can stand for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Council, this issue is before us, what's your wish? Councilmember Vaughn.
I'm hung up a little bit, because I've heard the word assumption a couple times. So, is there any historical record, did it go through the Parks Commission of this is their plat, this is what, how many houses and so forth, or?
Councilmember, I was hoping to find such an item, but no, there is not. And so, what I'm bringing forward is my best determination based upon what was paid and the rates that were established at the time. So, if you were to, what I'm basing it on is, we did tip, what was common to do at that time, when you had a combination between physical land that was dedicated and for a development, is you would take 1/3 as land dedication, and then 2/3 as cash in lieu of land. And when you take that calculation within this development, it comes out to them having paid for 213 lots, even though at the time, they only platted out 56 altogether.
And, Mayor, just for clarification.
Please, councilmember.
Because we have changed some of the plats, I mean, where they made two lots become one and so forth.
Sure.
Then what happens? Does this get revisited, checked out again, or what is the process for that?
Sure. The way that I'm proposing to move forward with it is, there's a credit of 100 lots, and so whether they take the 100 lots that are, are situated as shown on this development, or whether they split them up differently, that's what they would have. So, the next 100 lots that come in, they would not have to pay for. Anything above that, they would.
Councilmember Longi.
Thank you, Your Honor. John, can you take us back in time to the rough year that this was done?
Sure.
Having difficulty remembering it myself.
Sure. Originally, discussions occurred in 2001, the park dedication approval was paid in 2003.
That's right, okay. I remember, I thought I remembered it from Planning Commission, that's why it was, so I could use the help, especially whether it's Councilmember Ellen Schultz or you, Your Honor, since you're the two that have been here longer than, than I have, or anybody who just happens to have been a fan of city business for long enough that they would just remember it and tie it in some way to a $6,000 investment in their sprinkler system. I do, I do have a, I do have a question about, could there have been anything else that developer was working on, where they got something in return on a different development or in this development, that we said, fine, you can have that, but we want to tax you, if you will, for the entire park dedication fee in return for that?
Yeah.
And I know that's a variant of, of Councilmember Vaughn's question, but I don't want you to just limit yourself to this development, I just can't remember if there was another thing that that particular developer has worked on in Hastings recently where there might have been an offset done earlier, and this was meant as payment, so to speak, for that? And now, we see it a decade later, or more than a decade later, and we go, oh, look, they have a credit, when maybe they don't.
Sure.
So, I just want to push you gently one more time and push the, those council members who may have longer memories than, than I do on whether that could be a possibility. I think it's unlikely, I just want to ask.
Yeah, that's all. I would, I, I can't think of anything specifically, councilmember. I, I would agree that I would think it'd be unlikely. It may be difficult for us legally to, to have a dedication for a developer in a plat in a different area be credited for a plat in another area.
It would seem odd, yeah.
I, I think, from a legal standpoint, Dan, I mean, you'd pretty much have to deal with each development singularly unless...
It feels like it would stick out to us if it had happened.
The fees have to be attributable to the property that's being developed.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah. What I recall, and this was a long time ago, so it's not, but what I recall, this coming forward, there's two things. First of all, we have to remember, the developer then is different than the developer today. This property was sold to a new developer.
Right.
And that older developer, I think this was their only probably interest in the city at the time, I don't think they had any other property holdings in the city, so as far as a deal somewhere else, it was non-existent. The second thing is, what I recall is that at the time, and when the council considered this, is that it was a kind of a good deal, because the 56 plats were coming forward, and there would be a park built. There was concern at the time, as I recall, that, you know, sometimes these things get started, and we don't, we, here we're getting land and cash. Okay, let's get that park built out there.
You know what?
That was a concern of the council at the time. And, and I do recall that we, we realized, I believe, that it would not cover the whole thing, that future development would bring in more park dedication. So, I, I agree with John's analysis on where he wants to go with this, to give a credit there, because there was an understanding that, yeah, you know, we're getting land and some money, so we can start the park right away. We thought that was important for the neighborhood, but that it didn't cover it all. So, I think, as you have it laid out there, I think it's a pretty, it's pretty close to what we probably were thinking then, and that some of the fragments of that memory back then, as I recall.
Thanks, Your Honor. That actually does ring true, some of the phrasing you just used rang really true with me, and I think, I think you got it exactly right. I have no further concerns on this. Thank you.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Schultz.
And so, the, the area below the, the black line.
Mm-hmm.
Is still not platted.
Correct.
So, if that were to, were to be developed, they would still have, the developer would still have to pay park dedication on that portion.
Correct.
Okay, so then that would be kind of the extra, the extra that we're looking at. And, and I'm pretty sure we probably wouldn't have made a kind, any deal that was, wasn't inside Ward 1, when you're going with park dedication, because otherwise, you're starting to mix up those two, the funds that are in Ward specific, so I would think that it was the way the mayor described it.
John, is it clear that the developer today, that he understands that any future development south of that black line is going to require additional park dedication?
Yes, we have relayed that to him.
Okay. Councilmember Balsanik.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, if and when, below that black line, they come in to get everything approved, there will be park dedication, okay? And I understand that. Does that mean that another park is going to go into this area, then? So, they will have an elimination of some lots?
Sure. Councilmember, I think that's unlikely, I don't recall a park being identified within I don't recall a park being identified within our comprehensive plan in that area. Typically, what we'll do is we'll, we'll base any physical parks on our comprehensive plan, and I think the, the park that was already dedicated to the, to the north there satisfies that area. However, we would bring this forward to the Park and Recreation Commission, and if they chose to choose a park instead of cash dedication, then there would be some reconfiguration.
Okay, but they could take the cash and go and do something-
Correct.
-elsewhere in the city. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Then Ward One.
In Ward One. Thank you. This is all new to me. I was still in high school in 2001.
There you go. There you go. Okay, council, I'll seek a motion if there, one wants to be given. Councilmember Alagi makes a motion to approve. Second by Councilmember Brox. That motion is now before the body. Is there further discussion to the motion? Councilmember Vaughn?
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted, you had mentioned that the developer understands that before, is that going to be in writing, the understanding that, that, because you're right, Councilmember Balsanik had a good question, because that, that could change if the park, if the process goes through and they want to put a park in there, that could take out a few of the lots-
Sure.
-in that area. So I just want to confirm that that will be in writing, that going forward, that developer understands that that-
What, yeah, councilmember, any future plat that would come forward here, we would have the conditions for approval and a development agreement in which we would put forward the conditions for approval and the development agreement, he would sign on to agreeing to those. So that, and I think we would, we would, well, we would stand by what we've said tonight with the way that we've determined park dedication, that would really be a precondition upon development, that, that, that would, these park dedication issues would be owed in that area of future development. I don't know if that answers your question?
I'm just trying to clarify legally, is it, I want to have that in the document that says that, not just that there's an understanding, because what if it gets sold again, or there's a change of that?
And the difficulty we may have here, councilmembers, the area down here, we don't, we haven't had any sort of approvals for at this point. It's the only thing we've seen as a concept plan, and the plat that we're dealing with specifically is up here. So I, I don't know what the mechanism of that would be unless it would be a separate document. I'm kind of looking at Dan there a little bit for any, any guidance.
Councilor?
Your Honor, I think it's also important, we're prob, they're probably under two different ownerships. The area that we're talking about with this development is owned by the current developer. I have no idea who owns south of that black line. Perhaps what we could do would just be to get a letter or a written notice out to them confirming that. I don't know if John would be in support of that, but that we could notify the, the property owner before, below the line and let, and make it clear that that's the, the intent. Other than that, I agree with John, that is all going to get flushed out in the development process with a preliminary plat and so forth.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Okay. We have a motion before the body. Is there any further discussion to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Next, we go to the administration portion of our meeting. We have an update on the Levy Park renaming process. Chris? Welcome to the meeting, Chris.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Back again tonight to update you all and on the Levy Park renaming process. Bear with me a minute, I'll rewind back to January when the Parks and Recreation Commission started this process. There was direction to look at renaming Levy Park with all of the improvements that are happening as part of Riverfront Renaissance. So commission took that in January, started developing a list of, of names to consider. Came back in February after getting public input on the process and met again and narrowed that list down to three finalists. Met again in, in March and took those three finalists and then, then had a different idea to implement an umbrella name and over the entire area from CP Rail Bridge down to Lock and Dam and leave the existing park names as they were. Along with that came a lot of input from the public prior to the March sixteen council meeting. March sixteen council meeting presented the same idea for council, and we had direction to, to meet with Park and Rec Committee of Council. That meeting happened on March thirtieth with all three members present. We discussed a variety of items. Continue with the Park and Recreation Commission's recommendation to implement Hastings Riverwalk as the umbrella name over the entire landmass down by the river. Focus back on renaming Levy Park itself or implementing another alternate umbrella name that the committee recommended. Ultimately, committee voted two to one to, to have council consider Hastings Riverwalk as the umbrella name for the landmass between CP Rail Bridge and Lock and Dam. So that's what we're here for, council consideration for tonight.
Thank you.
May I answer any questions?
Thank you for introducing that item, Chris. Appreciate that. Council, this issue is now before us. What's your wish? Councilmember Nelson?
Thanks. Hi, Chris. Just to be clear, we're not renaming any of the parks.
That's correct.
And I know we talked about that.
We're not renaming any of the parks. Levy Park will remain, JC Park will remain, Lake Rebecca will remain, and River Flats will remain. The entire stretch will be known as Hastings Riverwalk, but there will be different identifiers within that.
Sure. So more of a marketing concept, if you would, as to from the one end, the railroad bridge all the way down to the Lock and Dam, Levy Park not changing is kind of the, the main one on that side where the Riverfront Renaissance is, is happening now.
So we can have the Blues and Brews Fest at Hastings Riverwalk.
Perfect, perfect. Yes, and Your Honor and, and other members of council, we discussed the, the issue in full, and I think we came up with a good result, and, and it just so happened to be the, the exact same thing that the Park and Rec Commission came up with as well. I guess we tweaked it a little bit. Instead of the Riverwalk, we went with Hastings Riverwalk, but I think that was probably inherent in their request anyway, that Hastings was part of the naming process anyway. With that, Your Honor, I think we went through a good process and had some good discussion on it. I'd like to make a motion to approve what staff is requesting.
Mr. Chairman, Councilmember Nelson makes a motion to approve the Hastings Riverwalk as the umbrella name by keeping the names the same of the rest of the park area. Councilmember Balsanik seconds that. That motion is before the body. Discussion. Councilmember Balsanik?
Yes, I, I want to thank the Park and Rec Commission for the, for the fine work they did on this. I've spread this idea around to constituents over the last month, and they like it. The idea of Hastings Riverwalk, you can take in four parks in the process. It's, it's, it's going to have, I think, a nice regional impact as far as that goes. So it's not just one park, but it's a series of them. Which one do we want to go to? You got one for almost every day of the week. That's great. The, I, I'm glad that we're not renaming Levy Park. We did have a discussion, though, about JC Park, and it is noted in here in your notes to the council, and just as a point of interest to the public, that it, it was not voted on, but there was discussion about renaming JC Park, because it's hard to find a JC in the city of Hastings. And that, you know, where does that group and what do they do and, and so forth? So at such time as we start to look at redevelopment of that particular area, we may want to reconsider a new name for that particular segment of what I hope will be the Riverwalk if we vote on that then. So, yeah, the, the reactions that I'm getting from the public are pretty good on that. And the, the, let's see, Hastings Riverwalk, we're going to have that as one, Riverwalk is going to be one word then, with the capital R and the capital W. I don't know if we're going to get any English teachers involved in that, but let's just leave it as is and see what happens. Okay? Thank you.
Councilmember Alagi?
Thanks, Your Honor. I'm inclined to be supportive as well, even with the capital W. That said, if council, if Councilmember Brox would yield to a question, I'm, I'm just curious, whenever I see a minority opinion, I always kind of want to hear a little bit more about it, but you're under an obligation to discuss why you voted the way you did.
Councilmember Brox, do you yield?
Yeah, I will yield.
Councilmember Alagi?
So just curious regarding the, the minority opinion.
Yes.
Tell us a little bit about your perspective.
So my thinking is, I appreciate all the work that has gone into the name and the process. I think they were both very solid, and so I'm supportive in that way. But I, I did have some input that I thought was valuable from a couple key people in Hastings. One was, you know, we have a lot of things named river. We have Rivertown, Dog Park, we have Rivertown Days. We, we are on the river, so it's valid, but could we come up with something that is just a little bit more creative, was some of the, the feedback that I received. So I couldn't come up with anything more creative, so I made a few suggestions about how we could involve maybe some more input, but it seems like time is of the essence to get the name going, and we don't really have time for a contest or something where we could get a wider array of input. So, so my vote was just because I wish we had more time, and I just want to be as creative and original as possible. And I don't, I don't think this is that creative, but it's very descriptive. It, everyone will know exactly where it is, so that's why I'm the minority opinion.
Thanks for sharing that.
I'm in support, I just wanted some more time.
Thanks for sharing that. Appreciate it. Am I understanding, Your Honor, of the time, if you will, you'll do a question?
I will yield.
Thanks. The, is that the, the rationale for the timing is because there's signs to be made, right? I mean, we have to actually have the signs ready in order and have things ready to roll with Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three rolling along here? Okay. Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Councilmember Brox.
Okay. I, I just want to chime in a little bit here, and I'm going to offer an amendment, because I'd be remiss if I didn't. I, I'm very pleased with the Riverwalk. I think the Hastings Riverwalk is appropriate. I think that's what should go on the sign. You know, those entrance signs on Sibley and on Ramsey. But I, I really do have an issue with calling the Levy Park the Levy. I know that we've had discussions in the past about its historical context. That's all well and good, but I, you know, I've, I've, through my years, people who are not been brought up here like I was, when you say Levy, they're looking for the dyke and put a finger, you know, they're looking for a flood control project. And I've never really liked the name Levy down there, even though we understand what that is. I think to a lot of visitors, it's confusing and, you know, what does that mean? And therefore, that's probably why you won't find it in a lot of other communities in their names. So I would be remiss if I didn't at least try. And Councilmember Brox, I'm going to try this, but unfortunately, I might have the word river in it, and so it may not be something you'd be very interested in, but I'm going to make a motion to amend the naming of Veterans or the Levy Park to, to be called Riverfront Crossings. And, and I note that, that's where the ferry was. We have a current bridge there that's significant. We have a railroad bridge that's there. We have a trail that goes there. We have crossings across there in, in many different stripes. And, and the sake of trying to find a name that might, might generate some interest, maybe not right away, but down the road, that Riverfront Crossings would be something that might stand out even more along the Riverwalk. So I'll make that motion and seek a second, and if, don't worry, if I don't get a second, it won't hurt my feelings. Second by Councilmember Alagi. Okay. So we have before us the Hicks Amendment. And I will open that up to the floor.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm wondering, Your Honor, if, if that's a separate function. I guess I'm looking to, maybe to Chris a little bit here. We're, we're kind of talking about branding the, the, the area. I guess we did start out with the initiative of, of renaming Levy Park or looking at the, at the different names for Levy Park, which kind of spurred the discussion, but I think in the end, we're coming up with the area and not really being specific to one park. So I'm wondering if we're talking about two separate functions, you know, that we have the umbrella of the wide area, and then maybe we should look at that as a separate function.
Well, I looked at it, Councilmember, by the fact that the recommendation of the committee was to have the overall umbrella and keep the certain names. And I'm going to object, I, I am objecting to the second part, that, that I think we can change the name that's commonly referred to as Levy to be something else.
Okay. I understand that part. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. I, that makes my understanding much better.
Okay.
Councilmember Balsanik?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would vote against the amendment for reasons that we had talked about at the previous council meeting. The, the sense of history and the name of that park, by, by renaming it, it does cause potential confusion in the future in terms of historical designation, people looking up historical things about a particular area and having to, having some difficulty regarding that. The second thing is the, the business of GPS systems, which a lot of us are very familiar with and use. So if somebody's going to plug in the name of a park, I don't know how quickly GPS systems update their, their applications. And so this could create some confusion as well. The third thing is that, wow, the, the citizens of Hastings, everybody that I've talked to has said, no, it's Levy Park, that's what we've always referred to it as. There's no reason to change it. It's, it's a good name. There, there's nothing really wrong with it because of its history and, and what it does and, and what was done there historically. By definition, yes, there are two kinds of levies, if you look at the definition, and again, we did talk about this at the last meeting. I'm not sure what you did as a young person down, down at the river.
I think I described that once. I threw pebbles into the-
Yes, I, I-
Into the river, rocks. And skipped it.
And, and, you know, we could refer to that, that famous song, you know, drove the Chevy, drove my Chevy to the levee, the levee was dry. And there, you know, there is a definition of a levee, of something that holds the water back in, in case of flooding and so forth. But there is a definition of a levee, you know, dealing with the land, dealing with commerce, dealing with tourism, dealing with everything that is historically American. And I, I was telling my wife the other day that I was very tempted to go and buy a DVD of that wonderful musical showboat and present it to you so that you could look at it and enjoy the movie, but also see what a levee in terms of commerce and tourism and so forth deals with. I, I have never thought of the levee as being, at, at least this Levy Park, as being anything other than something that was, you know, part of our history and part of our growth in a positive way, part of our commerce, part of our tourism and so on. And so I would, you know, recommend that we vote against that particular amendment.
Okay. Is there further discussion? Councilmember Vaughn?
Yeah, I may, I may still buy you the DVD, though.
Yeah, okay. Councilmember Vaughn?
I, we're deep into some amendments here, but I, I agree with Councilmember Balsanik. I think we got it, the, the motion that's in front of us, the original one, it's got too much in it. I know that we're trying to get the name ready for the signs and so forth, but I was following Councilmember Nelson. I understood the first part. I personally like to separate these two, because I, if signs are what we're, is hanging us up on, on a large project like this over three years, that's what I would say, let's slow down the process. Let's, let's get the, I'm, I'm good with the Hastings Riverwalk or whatever we're at, but we're deep here, so that's why I gotta, I think we should separate the two.
Just to be clear, the sign would still be the Hastings Riverwalk. I am not proposing to change that.
Yep.
It's just one of the parks. Remember, again, the recommendation of the committee was it be under a one umbrella, the riverfront, and that all the other names be the same. And so I'm just changing a portion of that second part with my amendment.
Got it. Yep.
Councilmember Schultz?
I don't, I don't know for sure if your amendment's going to pass or not.
That's okay.
I can't tell.
That's democracy.
Yeah, that's okay. My, my issue is I also think we need to rename JC Park, because as these two were mentioning, the group no longer exists in Hastings. And I don't know exactly how it became JC Park. If they did a lot of work down there, if the group had a lot of input, money, I, I don't know. input, money, I, I don't know. So, depending upon what happens to your amendment, we might have a suggestion that we talk about renaming Levy and JC after we get the umbrella of Riverwalk.
We do that another time, too.
Yeah, okay, that's just my suggestion.
Councilmember Brock?
So, Dana, we did discuss that in our meeting, and the only reason that we didn't work on that was because you have to have some kind of redevelopment effort, or something has to change about the park in order to go through the renaming process. So that's why we didn't deal with that issue at the time.
And the, the portion I want to rename is going under substantial change, so. Councilmember Alangi?
Uh, thank you, your honor. I reiterate my support for your motion, uh, while I think that, you know, the name does have River, and we could play around with that a little bit if we wanted to. I think for the sake of moving forward, I'd like to see us rename this. I also think that we ought to look at sometime soon, uh, JC Park and renaming it as well, with all due respect to those who were involved in its foundation. For technical, on the technical note, which I, I do want to lend, uh, you know, some, some, some vocal support for the fact that it will take some work to, to rename it. Like, you look up right here on, you Google Levy Park Hastings, or as I've typed in HA, it can't fill, auto-filled Hastings, Minnesota. I've never looked it up before on this computer, so it wasn't because of searches that I've done in the past or anything like that. And, uh, you know, there's an authority that you can go to, you can switch things around, they do update these things from time to time, but it will take some, some effort, as Councilmember Balsanik did. I also took the liberty, I was paying attention, everybody, but I did take the liberty since it was relevant and pertinent to what we were talking about, to check the Around Me app, uh, which doesn't mention any of the parks as, as historical yet. In fact, it doesn't mention the Le Duke Mansion, which we got to do something about. And when it comes to historical markers in and around Hastings. And it, and while it mentions that there's a new bridge, it doesn't talk about the fact that it is the, my understanding, the largest freestanding tied arc bridge in North America.
Five hundred forty-five feet.
Yes, yes. And that's the kind of information that people who use Around Me could really, really devour. So, it, my point is that we could, we could take some steps perhaps to, to guide staff regardless of, of whether this moves forward or not, to, uh, look at these sorts of opportunities to, to promote what we're doing, to make sure that maybe this has something like, if the Hastings Riverwalk, uh, as appears to, there, there appears to be less controversy around the broad concept of the Hastings Riverwalk than around the specific park names, but we ought to make sure that we can use these search engines to our, to our advantage. With that, your honor, I'll renew my second of your motion and, uh, encourage others to, to vote that way as well.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Balsanik?
Well, I, I, I do want to go back to the careful work that the commission did. And I, my, my philosophy has always been to take a recommendation from, uh, a committee or a commission, because they've done work, they've done their research, they have, you know, staff support and so on. And I always hate it when a recommendation comes before, uh, the body of the city council, and the council says, thank you very much, but we're going to do something else. It, it, it kind of creates an empty feeling, I think, on the part of the people that work so hard. And, and I am bringing this up again just to point out that I think that the commission has done their homework. They've heard from the public, and, uh, this, I think, is a very good recommendation that they have come, come along with, and, and that's what we should stick with.
Okay. Well, I'll just make a summary, uh, and then I know councilor you're becoming fully informed, so I'll just, in, in summary, absolutely, our commissions do great work, and, uh, but they're advisory in nature, and they know that. And, uh, we take as part of our judgment, any recommendation by a commission to, uh, you know, to a final decision here. I think the idea of Hastings Riverwalk is fantastic. I, I like it, and I'm glad we're going to adopt that. And I think it's appropriate, and it's a very good job by the commission, which was their idea, to, to have that under the umbrella. Sometimes, you know, when we took it, we look at things, history in this, this community has a lot of historical items. Thank you, Councilmember Alangi, for pointing out the, let's get the Le Duke on that site. But at the same time, you know, history's also making history. You know, we have made a lot of changes there at the, uh, Riverfront Renaissance that, uh, in a historical note, is, is making history. And in my point of view, I think it's time that we ought to recognize the fact that we are doing that. That it is a Riverfront Renaissance, that sometimes when you have a Renaissance, you start anew. And I think that, uh, if we recognize that particular part of the Riverfront as being something that crossings with a little bit of a bazaaz idea with marketing, if we ever want to use it for that direction, for the historical aspect, because it also is a crossing of the river, uh, with three different modes, uh, I think it speaks well to that. So, uh, although in the past, it was called the Levy, and we all know what that, that means, uh, for many of us who live here, I think it can also be a new day, and that we can create some history. And, uh, we certainly are doing that with the, with the, with the Riverfront Renaissance, so. With that, is, is there any further, uh, comment? I think what we'll do is, I don't know how this vote's going to go either, so I'm trying to, trying to listen to the different ones. Uh, I, I'm going to ask for the roll to be called. And, uh, Julie, can you call, clear, call the roll?
This is on the amendment.
This is on the amendment. This is only on the Hicks Amendment. This is on the, on the naming of Riverfront Crossings. Only on the amendment. Thank you for that clarification.
Councilmember Vaughn?
No.
Councilmember Alangi?
Yes.
Councilmember Balsanik?
No.
Councilmember Brock?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
No.
Mayor Hicks?
Yes.
Or yes?
Okay, there being four ayes and three nays, uh, the amendment is adopted. Now we have the recommendation before the city council, the, um, the action of the park or rec committee, uh, as amended, it would be called the Riverwalk, that's what will be put on the sign going into the area. And, and the only, and the only change is the name of this particular area. Is there any further discussion to the main motion?
Excuse me. We, we made an amendment to the motion, so we're voting on the main motion.
As I said, the amendment, the motion is amended.
Please give me the name of the new, give me the new name for Levy Park?
Riverfront Crossings. Okay. Okay, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay.
No.
Uh, two nays of Vaughn and Balsanik, so. There being five ayes and two nays, the motion prevails. Thank you, everyone. Uh, next, we have a verbal update on the sidewalk cafe approval process. Okay, Melanie?
Your honor and counsel, um, I will provide you with a brief update from some developments two weeks ago. If you recall, at the end of the meeting on April 6th, the council directed staff to, um, do some work on looking into what it would take to allow sidewalk cafes on city sidewalks and/or right-of-way. So, later that week, staff met and identified a number of things to be, um, amended or addressed as far as our licensing piece, or what would be permitted in our current code. Um, we've also provided you with some informal update, um, since that time. I've visited with Jennifer from Bella Vista last week and talked through, kind of got a better sense of what their request is, and we are waiting for a formal request from Bella Vista, what their, what their desire is. At this point, we, we kind of have two path process, your honor and counsel. The sidewalk cafe piece, while ordinance amendments are, are necessary and some, some policy considerations will be necessary, that's, that's going to march along pretty easily. The Bella Vista's specific request, which is to convert some landscaping on public right-of-way into hardscaping, unfortunately is becoming a little more complicated. There is an agreement with MINDOT on use of the property, that we can regulate it, but that doesn't mean MINDOT is not, um, still a player in the discussions. So, um, at this point, we think there's, there's some more meetings, some more discussions, perhaps a permit or more than one permit, um, from MINDOT or other agencies outside the city that would be required. There's a concern about removing the landscaping and the cost of the landscaping, and how those agencies that paid for it would be reimbursed, and then substituting a hardscaping material, and that that wasn't part of the numerous visual quality meetings as part of the big, bridge planning process. So, again, um, we have, Dan and Julie and, and Nick and others have worked to develop some ordinance amendments, some policy questions. It would be our recommendation to have the administration committee of the council review this. I know a couple of weeks ago, we had talked about public safety. With the luxury of some time, it feels like it best fits with admin committee. Um, I know we had talked about public safety, because we had a meeting scheduled with that group. And, and so that would be recommending, recommendation number one, we want to come back to the admin committee to talk about the ordinance amendments and the policy considerations that would allow sidewalk cafes. All right, and it would allow, um, alcohol to be served. Again, Parallel Track is working on circling back with the Bella Vista owners and seeing, um, what their desire is to work through the process with MINDOT, because again, there's, there's a number of steps that will have to be addressed. So, um, if there's, I'm happy to stand for any questions, but I will, um, be circling, hope to be circling back with admin committee members to get a meeting set up here. So, um, again, happy to stand for any questions.
I have a question, your honor.
Councilmember Schultz?
Melanie, is there any other property down in that general vicinity that they, that they own that could be used for, um, for them to do the, the sidewalk patio without having to mess with MINDOT and all that stuff that we had to, all that work we had to do in order to, you know, with the bridge?
Your honor and councilmembers, that's absolutely the discussion that we had before tonight's meeting is, we would like to be able to outline for Bella Vista, if there's an alternative that would apply equally to them as it would to any of our other downtown businesses that would want to have sidewalk cafe service. So, we're, we're, we would like to offer them sort of two paths, kind of the path, the easier path, and maybe a little bit more robust path, um, that would give them more seating, but might have a lot of hurdles to get there. So, we are looking at that as well.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, your honor. Yeah, Melanie's kind of brought it up a little bit too, but that was one thing that her and I discussed just over an email, and I said, and something for the admin committee members too. Other areas are going to want to do this, you know, the, you know, the other, the other downtown restaurants are going to want to look at sidewalk cafes as well, and, and, you know, I, I think of somebody like the Busted Nut, they don't have the corner like the Bella Vista does. You know, so they're going to want to be facing, you know, forward. So we have to kind of plan for that too, so I, you know, my recommendation to the admin committee members would be to think about those as well. You know, this is, Bella Vista kind of spurred the conversation, but it's going to be other, other businesses are going to want to look at this as well. So just to kind of remember that, and, and Melanie's brought that up several times, but that's a recommendation that I thought was a good idea as well.
Your honor and counsel, that's absolutely the path that we're, that's why we kind of have the two paths going down. We don't, we want to make sure that all of those businesses that would qualify would have the same information, same opportunity. So thank you for that.
Okay, Councilmember Balsanik?
Thank you, Mayor. Is this something that, uh, our consultant for Phase Three could be looking at as well, so that when we've got a business like the Busted Nut, there's also, uh, the Red Rock Cafe, I think, has a beer/wine license, as I recall, I'm not sure. But they, but they do have, the, the Red Rock does have tables and chairs out front. And, and we are going to be looking at Second Street again in terms of redoing some things. Is this something, again, that our consultant could look at, so maybe in front of the Busted Nut? The problem, of course, is that you never know how long a business is going to be there, you'd like to see them all stay forever. But there could be another business that would want to open up with, uh, a liquor license somewhere else on Second Street, and then you're, you know, running into the same problem, I don't know. But, yeah, I, I don't, I don't, I don't know how to address it. I, I like the idea that you're doing it two different ways. You know, the aggressive way and, and, uh, one that kind of suits everybody. The, uh, the thing is, is I looked, I walked around the Bella Vista, so, so you're saying that they would have to take some of the landscaping out, because that's the only place I can see where they would be putting tables and chairs, right? Is where there is existing landscaping?
Your honor and counsel, talking with Jennifer at the Bella Vista, if you're familiar with the landscaping site, it's sort of a triangular where it's narrow closer to Second Street and expands as it gets closer to the alley. Their desire is to take about half of that site on the north side, the wider area. They would ideally like to remove that landscaping, put in hardscaping, fencing, and have that as an outdoor patio space.
So it's not just the sidewalk that they're interested in?
That is true, and that's why that, their request becomes a little, becomes more complicated with MINDOT.
Are they requesting use of the sidewalk in the front of the restaurant then, as well? Or just over by the bridge?
Your honor and counsel, the, the question that has been raised by Bella Vista has been to look at that landscaped area. As we, on a staff level, have worked through some of the logistics that we think they will need to work through, the Bella Vista will need to work through to get approvals, we would like to be able to offer them an easier alternative, if you were a council member, and that could be along that Second Street side on the, or, you know, kind of around that corner.
Around the.
That's what we're, again, we want to be able to offer something that would be in compliance with our ordinance amendments while keeping accessibility, um, you know, as, on the forefront as well. So that's what we're looking, there, there could be, but that would result in likely a little bit smaller footprint than they are originally envisioning.
Right. Are we getting some cooperation with MINDOT on all of this?
You know, I, yeah, I think they've been good to work with. It's a big agency, and there's lots of, there's lots of, um, people that you have to, lots of layers that you have to work through. So, they've been, they have been responsive and good to work with, but I think just by the nature of the agency, they're a little bit larger, it takes some time.
Okay, you call it layers, I call it a bureaucracy. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I, there's no, um, okay, Councilmember Alangi?
Excuse me, your honor, I'm sorry. First, just want to mention that there's not necessarily anything wrong with the bureaucracy, it's how the people within it act that matters. Secondly, uh, I do want to, uh, point out that, uh, actually, second, now you make a formal motion, but sort of second in an informal sense, something that you said, uh, Councilmember Balsanik, about Phase Three. I mean, I'm open to the idea, when you talked about, you know, we've talked about bump outs and how important they are for the look and feel of the downtown. If we're interested in that sort of look and feel for the downtown, would we not also talk about an expansion of the sidewalk, sidewalk and curb a little bit, which might make it easier for all the businesses, no matter where you are? That way it wouldn't matter, if you just, you don't just do it in front of the Busted Nut, where it is right now, you do it in front of where any busted nut could be at any point in time moving forward. Uh, I wouldn't necessarily be averse to learning more about what that might cost, it might add considerably or too much to the project. Good thing we're going to item out everything that we have in mind. But I, I would, I would be okay with that general idea. I don't know, uh, what it would take to, to add that to the project, but I'd be curious to learn more about it if we thought it was feasible. Well, I'm not asking him to do all the work himself, I mean, we would contract it out, Nick, it's okay, so.
Multitasking.
I, I think that's, um, you know, I, I think it's well-intentioned. I think, uh, however, uh, you know, the way the plant, you know, that might have been a great discussion a year ago, uh, as we're talking about Phase Three improvements, but I think we're at the point now where, you know, we've identified the major points and the cost ramifications and the disruption of downtown, based on these type of proposals would be substantial. Maybe I could have Nick speak to it.
Well, the, the one trade-off for that sort of thing, if you were to move the curb towards the center line, is we start getting into, can we maintain the same number of parking stalls within the regulations that govern that? We, this is well before my time, maybe before everybody's time here, but that was quite a, a, a litany of hoops that the city had to jump through back when, uh, the angle parking became what it is. Because it's a not, it's a non-standard angle in there, and they did it to maximize stalls, so, uh, within the, the footprint that was there at that time, so. It's, uh, it'd be an equation to work through, certainly.
Your honor and counsel, all that being said, and thank you for that clarification, Nick, we, we did have a very same discussion about we're going to be kicking off Phase Three, this is a new element, what, what can our consultant help us with? I mean, does, will any of this, this desire impact what kind of plantings we decide to do, some of those logistical things? So it's on our radar, and we will plan to visit with them, um, at this. Um, at this point, it's premature to suggest what that might look like down the road, but we have, we do have it on the list.
Okay, okay.
I think we're fully informed.
Is the council becoming fully informed? Okay, this was an, an update, there's no, uh, no action required here.
Do you want to know how many feet wide is Second Street?
Seventy-two feet.
A bump out is thirty-six feet.
Right.
And it's, it's actually an extra lane, uh, it, it's, it's the equivalent of an extra lane on Second Street, so we could move the sidewalks out a little bit and still maintain the number of parking spaces.
Okay.
But we'll leave that up to the consultant, then we can blame him, right? Okay.
Okay, counsel, next on our agenda, the city council, uh, will be going into closed-door session to discuss pending litigation. Uh, I just want to have everyone know that, uh, once that is complete, we'll come back into open-door session, and there is a, an additional agenda item that, that remains that will be conducted under open-door session. Uh, so, but at the current time, we will go into closed-door session. Before we do that, some of our guests may be leaving. I want to, uh, at this time, take any comments from the audience, is there any comments from the audience, uh, this evening? Seeing none, uh, council announcements? Any announcements? Councilmember Vaughn?
Just an update that the Red Rock Corridor is gonna have a grand opening of the, um, Park and Ride down in Newport on Monday, the twenty-seventh, at four o'clock to seven o'clock. All are invited.
Thank you, councilmember. Uh, any further announcements? I just have a couple announcements. First of all, on Tuesday, April twenty-first, uh, the HPC will be meeting at seven PM here at Hastings City Hall. Uh, this Saturday, April twenty-fifth, is a spring cleanup day here in the city of Hastings at the Cal Rudy Public Works Facility from nine AM to one PM. That's our hazardous household waste day. Uh, it's also, uh, items like tires and old appliances and things of that nature that can be collected and brought to the Cal Rudy Public Works Facility. Again, nine AM to one PM this Saturday, April twenty-fifth. Uh, also, counsel, as a reminder, council staff strategic retreat will be this Saturday at eight AM to one PM at the Onion Grill. Please be there promptly at eight, we have to get started right away. Uh, maybe get there at seven forty-five to get a little something to eat, okay? So, but at eight o'clock, uh, we'll start promptly. Monday, April twenty-seventh, the planning commission will be meeting at, uh, City Hall at seven PM. And Monday, May fourth, uh, will be our next city council meeting at seven PM at City Hall. Also, there's an informational open house meeting for the Point Douglas Trail Project. Maybe you may recall that we were successful in getting some funding north of the bridge. And, uh, Washington, it, it's gonna be, uh, the, the information open house will be at the Washington County South Service Center at thirteen-hundred Ravine, uh, thirteen-thousand, I should say, Ravine Parkway Road in Cottage Grove from five, five to seven PM on Tuesday, April twenty-eighth. So just for your information. Uh, also, we would like to take this, uh, opportunity to wish, uh, city attorney Dan Flegel a very happy birthday next Monday, twenty-seventh, about twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth birthday, it might even be your golden birthday, twenty-seven, I, I'm gonna venture to guess. Okay, but happy birthday, Dan, okay? Councilmember Schultz?
I think Paulie's gonna say what I would say. Well, we would be remiss if we didn't acknowledge another birthday that's coming up, and that's next Tuesday, April twenty-eighth, so happy birthday, Mayor.
Well, thank you, somebody's been talking. Okay, well, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Twenty-nine again, many times again.
Anniversary.
Yeah, that's it. Okay, uh, there's, there's no further items before us. At this moment, as we recess to go into, uh, closed-door session, again, a reminder, we will reopen the meeting, uh, to open-door session, once that's concluded, we do have an additional agenda item. Uh, with that, I'll take a motion to recess. Councilmember Schultz makes a motion to recess, talked to by Councilmember Nelson. All those in favor of that motion to recess say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails, we are in recess for the purpose, uh, recess for the purpose of going in closed-door session.